So, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Do not have any presentations tonight. Consent agenda. All items on a consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered normal sequence. On tonight's docket, we have the city council minutes for April eighth, twenty nineteen, the revised copy which we were handed this evening, the resolution approving dispersments through April twenty second, twenty nineteen, a public dance permit for the Lamb of God church, Saint Anne's lawful gambling exempt permit, and a surplus property declaration. So, any questions or concerns regarding anything associated with tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to go ahead and approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five dollars per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided and identify themselves providing on a name and address. And that's actually for our continuous use permit, so I think that's gonna be another step here, yeah, conditional use permit. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to go ahead and address city council tonight? We'll deal with the BP situation a little later. Okay? Can I go ahead and get a motion then to go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We now move on to public hearing. Public hearing tonight is for the Lassure Police Department body worn cameras. Can I go ahead and get a motion to open up the public hearing portion of our tonight's public hearing meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public meeting is now open. City administrator approval.
Mayor Hane, members of city council. Tonight, we are holding the, the public hearing that's required by, by state statute when we implement body worn cameras. If you remember at the last meeting, what we did is we approved the purchase of these. Now we're holding the public hearing. We posted all the information of the draft policy online along with our data retention policy as it's described in the statute. Tonight, we, we welcome people to come up and, and talk about their, their perception of implementing body worn cameras. We have the police chief and sergeant here as well to answer any questions from city council. But what we, what we want, and I've, I've solicited and offered to get public comments via email, phone, things like that for people that can't come in here too. But what happens is these public comments get stored in public record permanently. And then if we ever have to come back and, and bring this issue up again or this item up again, we can always look back at that public record. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions. The public is up here, they can, they can comment as they choose. If you do comment, just identify yourself, name, and address, and then our city clerk can document all this information. So, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to city council. We do have our police chief and sergeant here if there are specific questions about the actual items. But I'll leave it to city council.
Anybody from the audience have anything that would, that they'd like to ask of our police chief or our police sergeant regarding the body caps? I could have our police chief come to the dais, perhaps we had, anybody have any questions from city council?
Should we close the hearing first?
Well, let's, we keep the hearing open until we're all, not some, a question may come up. Anybody have any questions at all in regards to what we discussed two weeks ago? Everybody feels comfortable with what Sergeant Tiki provided to us? Got ample time to go ahead and research and do the, go through the material? Well, I guess we're not gonna need your presence tonight, police chiefs, so thank you. Can I go ahead and get a motion then to go ahead and close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed.
Thank you for your time.
Very, thank you very much to both, for all, all three of you for your time. Sorry about that, we might have some questions.
You never know.
You never know.
Thank you.
We now move on to our regular agenda. The first item on the docket is the after prom committee donation request.
Please approve the process.
Oh, yes.
I actually have a question for you guys.
Please.
My last question, do we need to make a correction to the adopted date?
For the twenty second.
Yeah, because it says the eighth.
That was something that we had submitted earlier.
I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the policy.
Would that change?
Would that change?
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the policy with the change of April twenty second?
All second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Let the ordinance show that, or the policy show that we're gonna use April twenty second as the date vice today's date. Okay, now, get on to the regular agenda. First item on the docket is eight alpha.
Do we need to approve the expenditure as well? And that's recommended?
No, so typically the expenditure is approved the last day.
Okay, it just isn't, no, so it's last.
First item on the docket is eight alpha, the alpha prop, the after prom committee donation request, city administrator approval.
Mayor Hane, members of city council. What we have before you today is a request from the after prom committee. I believe we have a couple individuals here representing them. As far as their request to use the community center facility free of charge from May fourth through May fifth. Staff has compiled what that waive, waive, what that would cost to waive those overnight rental fees. We do have an item for overnight rental of our facility and it's three hundred and seventy-five dollars per night. So, you'll see in the agenda packet, there are some items as far as the facilities and those are waived in the amount of time that they assume they'll have the facility or use the facility is thirteen hours. And that's just kind of a, a way that we gather more information. But there is a rental fee, an overnight rental fee that we're asking to be waived or that's what the request is. So, what we have is a recommendation, we wanna discuss this proposed request. And like we do with all of these types of requests, you know, consider adoption of the request to waive the overnight rental fee of three hundred and seventy-five dollars via motion. There are a couple individuals here, I don't know if they wanna talk about it at all, or?
We're here for questions, if you have any questions.
Won't you please, please step up to the dais and city council has everything for you. I'm sure they'll be more than happy to ask. Council, ladies, do you wanna present yourselves first, please?
Sure, my name is Sarah Becker, I'm one of the coordinators of this year's after prom party.
Okay.
And Sue Olmous, I'm the same.
You're one of the ladies that got your arms twisted this year, huh?
Yep.
It has to do with our kids, actually.
Well, that's good. Why don't you guys give us a little highlight in regards to what you're planning and?
So, we're planning to set up around five o'clock on Saturday night. We have inflatables from?
USA inflatables, a hypnotist, and we have games, prizes for kids. Roughly, we have, in the past, they've had a hundred and twenty students. Again, it's open to all LSH juniors and seniors whether they go to the prom or not. And then we also open it to their guests, they sign in, yeah. And so they come probably twenty minutes right after the dance is done at the high school. And this is free to them, they pay nothing, it's just something we do for the kids. This year, we're keeping it at Lassure, last year they went offsite. They took a bus to the metro area, but we like to use the community center, it's all great for a hundred and twenty plus kids and hopefully have thirty to forty volunteers there all night too. That would provide food and drink and?
We're using the volleyball court, the gym, the ice arena, the loft upstairs, and the kinda hallways in between.
Not the pool.
Anybody from city council have any questions?
Is, is this your first year back? I know you were up in the city the last few years, weren't you?
Yeah, and it changes every year, the coordinators, it's kind of the parents of us junior students at the time planned it, but they did. No, I think, um, two years ago, they did a carnival, yeah. I think every other year, they've kind of been asking the kids what they wanna do and sometimes, but our general consensus this year, they wanted us to stay in town.
And, and tell me the hours again, what hours are you here?
We're gonna start at five to set up and then the kids will be there at midnight. Until, the kids will stay midnight to four thirty and then we'll take everything down, probably be out of it by six in the morning. So, yeah, so for the kids, it's four, or midnight to four thirty.
I wish you well, I did two years myself, so.
This is Sarah's second year as well, so.
Yeah, it's, it's fun.
We both need to be commended for taking on such a challenge, so.
Yeah, and, yeah, a group of kids, and we greatly appreciate, you know, if you're able to donate the services. Like I said, we get all our money through donation and businesses in Lassure and we use it all for them.
We have over six thousand dollars in prizes to give away, I know, so, yeah, we're super excited.
Good enticement for them to come instead of, you know, go somewhere else and everything.
Don't take, I think, our city administrator, probably not too.
Definitely not.
We'll look into that, I know.
You're all to me then too. Pepper package deal. Anything, guys, anything else from the ladies?
Just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, very luck, we wish you all luck, thank you very much. So, can I get a motion to go ahead and waive the three hundred and seventy-five dollars and approve the, approve this expenditure?
So moved.
Any, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any additional discussion?
I'll take second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, ladies.
Okay, thanks so much.
Good luck to you.
Yeah, thanks.
Next item on the docket is eight Bravo, Lassure Airport East Taxi Lane Project and Professional Services. City administrator approval.
Mayor Hane, members of city council, tonight, hopefully bringing back, well, we are bringing back an item that you guys discussed at the first meeting of February. This was sent to the airport commission, which we had a very fruitful meeting with that group. Kind of an kickoff meeting for the new members of that group. And they made a recommendation, so I'll turn it over to public services director Rich Cuchera or Cory Beanfeng from Bolden Mink for this proposal. But it's very similar to what was proposed on the, on the first meeting in February.
Welcome, Rich, welcome, Cory, nice to have you back tonight.
Thank you. There we go. So, January fourteenth, proposal was brought to the council for engineering services and then discussion was brought up relating to the water and sewer services, so it was deferred till later, brought back in February looking for direction. Direction was, we were gonna get an airport commission back, go back to airport commission. So, on April fourth, we did have an airport commission meeting and the commission voted to recommend the project as stated, including the water and sewer. So, as you can see, the project allows for eighteen hangars to be built, who would add eleven hanger sites, would allow for water and sewer to all the new hanger sites, and also would allow for water and sewer to the existing five hangars on the one side and three hanger sites.
Yeah, I can. So, the, the proposal that you see in front of you is very consistent, that twelve Y taxi line expansion. The sewer and water are eligible to be participated under the FAA grant or loan program, so the, the funding breakdown is still the same as what you saw previously, the ninety-five and five. Obviously incorporating the sewer and water increases the overall cost of the project as well as those engineering services, and that's really the change that you see in front of you tonight, just an overall increase to the, to the project cost. As far as project goals, schedule is still, at least at this time, proposed to be the same. We would enter into design, first step here would be collecting survey. If this is deemed to, you know, proved to move forward, we would do that here in the next couple months. We'd be looking at bidding, hopefully early summer, and then construction here late summer and fall, and then closing out, you know, spring of next year. The only caveat to this is we are necessary to borrow beyond what we currently have through the FAA loan program. And so this, the schedule as far as construction is contingent on being able to partner with another airport and exchanging those funds. It's a, it's a payback, so they'd be loaning them to us here so we can do our project and then once we receive those, we would then pay them back. So, it's a, it, it's a common thing, it's just identifying an airport that, that isn't expending those funds that we, and we can partner with. So, just a contingency with that, something we haven't pursued yet, but we would have to if this is approved to move forward with it.
City administrator approval.
If I may, Mayor and city council, we, we did something like this with Hutchinson a couple years ago. And what, if, if, once we identify an airport that we could possibly do this with, you'll have a, a formal agreement that gets brought to city council and then is approved or considered for approval that, that, to formalize that, that agreement. So, it's not something, you're not approving that portion of that tonight, that'll be coming back to city council, probably in the next month or two.
To be clear, we're simply approving the engineering services, correct? If we approve.
Correct, so that's what we are here tonight for, asking for approval for the proposal from Bolden Mink for the professional services related to the project which includes the engineering.
May I ask them some questions?
Please.
These are related to the airport commission meeting also. Would you go back, please, to the T-hanger slide and show people what we're talking about, to be clear? Gentlemen, if you look at that, where are the T-hangers?
The second row.
Second row. There's a shape there that sort of looks like Ts, right in there, thank you. That's what a T-hanger is, okay? It's basically a, a smaller hanger than others, correct, gentlemen?
Correct.
Okay. Are the wa, be clear, are the water services going to be available to those T-hangers?
No.
Okay. Everybody understand that the other hangers would have water availability, but the T-hangers would not. It's basically, they're a smaller space, they're designed simply to put, if you look at the shape, to put the nose of the aircraft in and have the wings in there, there's not much more room, sir. That's, that's to be clear. Okay, the other thing we learned, and I ask you to confirm it, Rich, if you would, we had two people speak who are tenants currently at the airport and you're talking about water and sewer connection fees of roughly six thousand dollars. They both, those two individuals said, yes, well, right away, we'll do that. If we recoup, Rich is incorrect, if we recoup six, six, five, five hangers putting in water and sewer, we recoup our portion of roughly thirty thousand.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanna make that clear.
That was a very good calculation right there.
I did some asking around too, it's my understanding that, talking with some of the, the hanger owners, it's kinda, it gets to be difficult to borrow funds for, from a bank for building a hanger. But I guess it's more attractive for the banks if they have utility hookups for water and sewer, which means that it's gonna be, it might be easier for financing to be able to build for, for the different lots.
If I may, we're not quite in a discussion of a motion yet, but what that also means is we have more potential people renting from us on hanger space. It was pretty clear from tenants that water and sewer, and also, by the way, they would want high-speed internet, which is a separate issue and doesn't cost us anything. But water and sewer will give us an attractive facility. Right now, that's one reason we are drawing people. It will be a draw for people.
And one of the other things that we plan on doing is having the economic development authority get together with the airport commission to have a meeting in regards to what the potential future growth could be of the airport. For example, maybe some businesses that would wanna come on into the airport at some time, starting next year. So, that's a good thing to be looking forward to as well. Any other questions for our gentleman?
I have one more for either the two gentlemen up front or for Jasper.
Okay.
It's unfortunate Silas isn't here because he's probably the first person to answer, he's the Bolden Mink expert in aeronautics. If we do this, if we, we get this money from the federal and the state government, we do have an obligation to keep that airport open and I'd like someone to speak to that. In other words, if we, if we don't keep that airport open, where we have a twenty-year payback, I believe it is, we will be required to pay back money. So, we're doing this for economic development, I'm not worried about that, but I'd like to get everybody cards on the table so you know what we're obligated.
If I may, Mayor and city council, council member Croppman proves a good point. When, when we enroll in this FAA entitlement program, we're obligated to keep the, the airport open for a certain amount of time, whatever the grants are, are deemed as far as the terms go. So, if we would do this project and say, we wanna shut down the airport in the next year, we would then be on the hook to pay back those entitlement funds. So, it's something that, I think, council member Croppman, I don't know if he visited that airport up in northern Minnesota that's kinda having this discussion right now, but, you know, it can be a large sum of money because we've, we've done a lot of projects out at the airport over the last twenty years, so there's, there potentially could be a lot of money if we would choose to close this, close the airport down. So, I don't think, I mean, there is no discussion of closing the airport down, but that's just something that everybody should be aware of if that discussion ever does come up.
You took a tour of my azoli up north?
Okay, yeah, Silver Bay in Minnesota up on the North Shore decided that their runway is crumbling, literally, and they owe a lot of money and so they said, well, just shut the airport down. Now, I, I visited the airport, I was heading to be up there last weekend. It's more than, it's about ten miles out of town, it's in the middle of nowhere. Unlike ours, which is readily accessible for businesses and tenants. This thing is out in the middle of nowhere. There's only three, there's four hangers, maybe four and a half, one's larger, okay? It's a totally different operation than this, but what happened to that was, they said, we wanna close our airport and of course, state, at least the federal I know, said, we want you to pay back all that money that we gave you as an entitlement grant that's still left for a number of years we expected you to be open. So, it's a serious decision on our part, I'm not worried about that personally. We're trying to develop this airport and not close it down, and this will greatly help us do that.
Well, to, to be clear, council member Croppman, I'm guessing that if FAA has the requirement where the city would have to pay back funds, then that, would that be a?
I, I can't recall, but I would say it is, it's, it's only five percent of the overall, but only five percent of six hundred thousand plus is a lot, so, yeah.
So, everybody understands what we're looking at for our future. We're looking at the potential for growth, but we also realize that we're marrying this up for the next twenty years.
It's no different than any other one that we wind up getting here on hold for.
Just wanna make sure that everybody's aware. Any additional questions for either our experts, our city administrator, our airport commission head over here? Anything at all, before we get going on this? Okay? Well, then, that said, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the proposal for engineering professional services from Bolden Mink for the East Taxi La- Lanes Construction Project.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried, and gentlemen, thank you so much for all the work you've put towards this.
Thank you.
Guys, have a great night, thank you. Next item on our docket is eight Charlie, which is the conditional use permit for BP Motors located at three one zero six one Forest Prairie Row. City administrator approval.
Mayor Hane, members of city council, we have community development director Samantha DiMaggio available to make this presentation.
Good evening, Director DiMaggio, how are you this evening?
It's nice to see all of you. This evening, you do have a request in front of you for a conditional use permit for BP Motors. Jasper, if you could forward to me, please. Where BP Motors is located, it's currently zoned at C one, which is commercial light industrial. The request for a conditional use permit comes into play because they are going to be doing used car and new car sales. Anytime you're gonna do motor vehicle sales, motor vehicle repair shops, in the C one district, you have to get a conditional use permit. The site that this, that BP Motors is on is a five acre site. There is a primary structure on there, which is approximately thirteen thousand square feet, and there is a secondary structure, which is approximately four thousand square feet. Right now, how it would stand is for parking, for the storage use, you would need one parking spot for every two thousand square feet. And for office space, you need one parking spot for every two hundred square feet. I'm assuming the office portion of this is fairly small, Mr. Wyman is here though, so we can ask him those things. Here are some historic pictures on the site. When Mr. Wyman and I first met, he had had a graphic, the black and white graphic, that shows cars basically parked on the lawn, parked on the improved surface, kinda parked everywhere. And so I went on to see what kinda historic photos I could find, I believe the one in color is from twenty thirteen, which shows cars just around the perimeter. So, one thing that we've asked Mr. Wyman to provide for us is, is some type of diagram indicating exactly where he's gonna be doing his parking. So, that is the condition that you're gonna see of the conditional use permit. The reason we want that is, we typically don't want, as you know, we don't want businesses parking on lawn when they have improved surfaces that they can park on. So, how the code requirement, requirement stands is you need to have some type of improved off-street parking area that can be made of concrete, bituminous, or other type of paving stone, has to be an equally durable surface and a dustless surface, that's another thing that we ask for. We also ask that they're screening from the public, so if Mr. Wyman's gonna do any car repairs, maybe on some cars that say he has a car that's been in an accident and he's gonna do some repair work on it, we ask that you have that in a more enclosed area so that the general public doesn't see any cars that might be sitting there for a long period of time. We also, one thing that we've, we've talked about in the past, I know, and we've seen other conditional use permits, is what if he wants to add more parking space in the future? He does have a five acre site, he's, he's definitely able to do that. We would just have him submit any plans to us that show where he's changing the surface type, whether it be from going from grass to concrete or whatever his intentions are, so that we can make sure that it goes along with his conditional use permit and our code. The planning commission did review this at their March fourteenth meeting. They do have some things that they would like to see that are contingent, contingent upon getting this tonight. One of them is that he does provide us with a floor plan to determine if he has adequate parking. That shouldn't be too hard, I think that he could probably provide that for me within the next few days, you know, if we were, if we're willing to sign up on his conditional use permit. But we wanna make sure that he has enough spaces set aside for office or for any other type of work that he wants to do. I'd also like to get a general feeling from him on approximately how many cars he intends to fit. I know he has some U-Haul storage, which I think is a great addition to our community, but we wanna make sure that we understand exactly how many of his cars he's gonna have, where he's gonna put them, how that will appear for people driving by from the road. As I said, no storage of vehicles is allowed except for on the approved surfaces. So, that original picture that he showed us, the parking on grass, we wouldn't allow that. That's not an approved surface, we wanna make sure that they're parking on something that qualifies as our approved surface. We also wanna make sure that any vehicles that are being repaired are screened from the view of the public. Those are the conditions that the planning commission is suggesting to you. If you agree to these terms and conditions, there is a resolution that I'd like you to authorize. Mr. Wyman is here for BP Motors and I'd like to introduce him to you and maybe give you a chance to ask him any questions.
Sure, before we leave Mr. Wyman, question for you on the twenty seventeen map. The five acres, that's everything that's included within the blue outline?
So, yeah, his five acres, you can see, he's got some grass, he's got quite a bit of area for expansion. He's got some areas on either side of his building where he could expand to. But as I said, we'd love to see him expand his business here, but I just wanna make sure that it's done in a way that we approve of, make sure that the surfaces meet. If he's changing any of our, any area that might affect stormwater, especially near the highway, we wanna make sure that we know that. So, just asking him to keep us up to date as he changes his plans with the site. And he and I have talked about that being a fairly new business, I think he's still trying to figure out exactly what type of demands he's gonna have on the site, and so I think he'll speak to that when he comes up here.
Mr. Wyman, please. First off, congratulations.
Thank you. Well, my name is Chris Wyman, BP Motor Company. My family and I have moved from Belle Plaine to this area, thus the BP, is where that came from. What we would like to do is, is basically, yeah, we, we really want to improve the property, make it look, we want it to make it look nice. Obviously, we wanna provide a clean-looking business. I do have plans and what steps to go through here this spring already, painting the building and stuff like that. The, what you see in the pictures is, yeah, we, we're cleaning the grounds and getting things straightened out. There's a lot of debris from the previous owners that we're still dealing with and it probably will take a little time to get that straightened out. The only thing I can see for sure in the future is I'm having problems with people driving in the front yard. I cannot keep people out of there. Happened today, it happened yesterday, and it just happens daily. That's probably gonna be my first area to? That's probably going to be my first area to to really change the look there is is we're going to have to, unfortunately, get rid of the grass. I, I took so much pride in it last fall, because I was so proud of myself that we got the grass to look so nice. And I stand there, I watch people drive through and turn around and park in there. Um, it's just been a huge problem. I don't, uh, at first I kind of tried to figure out, you know, what are people thinking? So I chased a couple of them down, asked them, you know, what do you, what do you think? And, uh, first they were scared at first, but then after we started talking, uh, they just really couldn't give me an answer. They just needed to turn around. And then we've had a lot of semi problems in there, uh, turning around, they're lost, they're trying to find their business that they're looking for, and it just really, it really hurt our driveway. Uh, we had one this last week after the rainstorm, eighty thousand pound truck, uh, just destroyed. And I walked outside and I go, really, what are you thinking? Well, I'm turning around, I'm lost, and I, I said, what's down on my driveway? The truck was just sinking as we were talking. So it just, you know, you really, you can't get mad at these people, but I'm trying to figure out how to improve this problem in the future, um, you know? So those are kind of some of the things, you know, that at first we're not going to bring in a ton of cars yet. We're still trying to recoup the purchase, um, and get rolling again here. But, uh, definitely we want to work with everybody and provide a good-looking business. So that is my intentions, and thank you for having us. We'd really like to be in town here. It's been fun so far, so. Any questions?
Little bit about the U-Haul business, uh, kind of curious about that.
You know, years ago, I had U-Haul and been with U-Haul for many years, actually. And when we were in Belle Plaine, we started with that again, uh, and everybody loved it. And of course, now they're mad at me because we moved it over here, but really, everybody's come two times now to rent. And, uh, we have a really good relationship with U-Haul, and we actually service the U-Haul equipment now. And it it's great for the community. I mean, it's really the cheapest way to rent a truck quick and get your stuff out. And there's another company out there that can rent a truck cheaper than U-Haul, so.
So it's not just the vehicles you also have, like the various packing materials.
Correct. Oh, absolutely. My son's taken that to even a level that I had never taken it back in the old days. So that all the packing supplies, boxes, tape, uh, the cushy stuff, the whole nine yards. And people really need that, you know, much more than back in my younger days, we'd go get a bunch of boxes from the local gro- grocery store to move your stuff. Well, that's sometimes you can't do that anymore, so, uh, it's been a great, uh, thing for everybody to handle, so.
City Council, any questions? Councilmember families.
Yeah, how do your cars come in, come in on a, like, eight and wheel or?
No, I I buy my cars all over the place. Um, we want them to run. If if we buy a repairable, we just take our tow truck and go get it. So really not any semi loads. Um, I do have a buyer down in Florida, uh, but we typically are just driving them home. So really no loads, the semi loads of them coming through yet. I'm a little small for that. So.
I have a question for Director Demagio.
Councilmember Kropman, uh, Samantha.
See, now she's giving her stats, huh?
We got you a thermometer on it.
If I may, sort of, I know the answer, but I think it's important that you say that. First of all, this conditional use permit would apply to all five acres, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everybody understands that it's a bigger area than just where you see things now. Secondly, this type of conditional use permit would run with the lands, if I understand it correctly, as long as it is used for the same purpose. Uh, if it were to stop, there's a period, you can help me out here. If there's a period where it's not used, then the conditional use permit would expire. But if this owner were to sell it to someone else and they used it for the same thing, it would stay with that new owner. Would you explain that for us, please?
Well, I think you bring up a very good point, because this has always been a car dealership. So you may even say to yourself, why are we having to look at a conditional use for something that's always been a car dealership? So, um, Councilmember Kropman is correct. If you have a property that's been vacant or unused, if they don't use their conditional use permit for a year, it becomes null and void. So that business had been closed for, since I had gotten here, so at least over a year, maybe, you know, closer to two years since anyone had been in there occupying it, and that's what made that conditional use permit go null and void. So when Mr. Wyman got here, I think he was maybe even a little surprised that he had to go through this process. But as I told him, since the building had been vacant, that we needed to now reissue a new conditional use permit. You are correct, it does go with the property. So if Mr. Wyman were to sell and someone new that were to come in, they can take over his conditional use permit. But if Mr. Wyman were to just leave and it were to sit vacant again for another year, then the new person would also have to reapply.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any idea when we're looking at for a soft opening and?
Well, we're looking, hopefully for June first, for our, you know, official grand opening is what we've tried to put forth together. You know, we, like I said, we've been working really hard inside the building and stuff, and we feel like we're just about ready to be official. Permits and all in place and everything like that, so.
Any other questions?
I I have one for, uh, either Samantha or for Jasper. My understanding, and I apologize for not raising this earlier, it just caught my eye. Normally, in a resolution, the wherethas is basically, we won't call them meaningless, but they're not a part of the official motion. What I noticed is the property is not identified in the resolve section. It probably should be somewhere, it should, for example, read hereby approves the conditional use permit for the property located at three one zero six one Forest Prairie Road, this sort of, so.
So this was drafted by Nate Sparks, our planning, uh, our planner? And so that was a template that they typically use? If you would like, I could, you could adopt the resolution adding that language to the bottom.
That's what I'm sort of suggesting we do. Uh, I think we need to have it in the resolution, not in the wherethas. I don't think we need the full legal description. Mr. Scoobitz might have an opinion here, I don't know. Uh, we've got a whole fancy one there, but here we've got an address, which is a lot easier to digest, so.
So I had Kimberly review that, and she was okay with it, but I think, as you said, this is more of a preference for how you like your resolutions laid out compared to how maybe other cities do it. But our attorney did review it, and Nate did draft it, but if you'd like that changed, sir, I'd be happy to make that prior to.
Well, I could, if if we're at the point of moving, I'll simply do that, Mr. Mayor, but I I just wanted to get it clear.
Well, well, we have our city attorney here. Does it make a difference if we put the address in for the wherethas?
It doesn't, no.
Okay.
I would like to have legal description in there though for the, for the.
The entire legal description, I suppose, just the address?
John, it's not clear. Are we, the the legal description is in the wherethas now, okay?
Correct.
But there's nothing about the property identification in the actual resolution.
It should be in the resolution.
That's, that's, okay. Do we need the legal description there? Would you prefer that?
I would prefer the legal description.
Okay, we can easily say it without saying.
And if it's too big, we can attach it, isn't it?
Well, we, it's not that big, it's six lines long.
Yeah, six lines. Okay, any other questions? Anybody?
Councilmember Kropman, if you could just mark that up, the changes you'd like, then I'll make it prior to.
We can do it verbally now, I think, and we can pass it.
Okay, because I don't have anything to take note of.
If the council desires to pass it, then we can move forward. And the business can get going there, so.
We're basically just taking everything, Samantha, we're just taking everything from the third wherethas, the entire legal description, and we're inserting that into the mountain four.
Okay, and then the property address?
Just the entire legal description, correct, to our city attorney.
Okay, Samantha.
We can do it.
So, everybody understand where we're going with this and what we're doing? Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, can I go ahead and get a motion to authorize this resolution approving the conditional use permit for BP Motors to operate an auto sales and service business at three one zero six one Forest Prairie Road with the addition of making sure that we use our legal description, the six lines that are under the third wherethas, and the therefore. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried, and along with that, congratulations to you, Mr. Wyman.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to the sewer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, thank you.
You too. We now move on to line item eight delta, which is our capital lease items approval for the government capital corporation. City Administrator approval.
Mayor Hake, members of City Council. Uh, before you, uh, we we basically have two lease item requests, the first one being, uh, with government capital corporation. And what this one entails is fitness equipment, uh, from free motion, uh, for nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and seven cents. Uh, so this is something that has been approved by City Council. This is just one of the payments that we're we're making to free motion for, um, the equipment that, uh, I believe will be delivered on May seventh.
The twenty nineteen installment.
Yes, so, um, with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions, anybody? Well, that was easy enough. Go ahead and, uh, accept a motion then to approve the execution of a payment request, uh, for the government capital corporation.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We're making it easy on us tonight, City Administrator approval. And the next item on the docket is eight Echo, which is the capital lease items approval for kinetic leasing. City Administrator approval.
Mayor Hake, members of State Council, um, again, this is a capital lease item approval request, uh, to be paid. Uh, this is through kinetic leasing, this is through our capital, uh, equipment leasing program that we've, uh, approved and we're implementing this year. Uh, the first one is for Identisys, which is an access control system for doors, um, various places around the city. We have a fire department transport vehicle, um, maybe it's on Facebook or or Twitter, the the new transport vehicle, uh, that K R graphics put decals on, so, uh, it will be at the pancake breakfast on May fifth, I believe, so you'll have to go check it out. It's a, it's a nice looking rig. Um, and then there's a pressure washer on there for the streets department, and then an AE two S, uh, and a, uh, continuation of the SCADA improvements that we have going on at the wastewater treatment plant. So, uh, with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have on the four items.
Anybody from City Council, any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then for the execution of a payment for, and I'm going to go ahead and list them specifically. Identisys, Identisys Systems Incorporated for three hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty cents. Midway Ford Company for thirty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. All American Pressure Washer Manufacturer Incorporated for five thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. And Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services for eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents to be dispersed to kinetic leasing Incorporated.
Some more.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I have one quick question, to be clear. With the Ford F- one fifty for the fire department, we are not purchasing, we are leasing, is that correct?
That is correct. So what what we do is, this is just authorizing kinetic to pay midway forward that full amount, and then over seven years, we pay back kinetic leasing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So we got a motion. Can I get a second? Okay, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now move on to our comments, reports, and items of appreciation, and we're going to start with Councilmember families tonight.
I have, I have no meetings to report, uh, since our last. So other than the fact that we have a Mirth Puck meeting coming up on Thursday.
This coming Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that would be four twenty-five. Thank you, Councilmember Kirby.
Not much to report. I've got a, um, hospital board meeting I'll be attending tomorrow, a little bit of an orientation before the meeting for me, so I'm kind of looking forward to that. Uh, and other than that, um, I want to wish all the promgoers and the good parents that are going to help with the prom a good, safe evening, and what day is the prom? It's May fifth, May fourth, so, thank you.
Did you have an ETA meeting tonight as well?
I did.
Anything you could report on the ETA meeting?
Uh, well, a couple disappointments, of course, um, um, we didn't get that grant that, uh, we were all hoping for for the, uh, the downtown project, and, um, some snags and, and, um, the sale of some property out by, uh, out by, uh, Cambridge out there. But those, those are getting resolved, so we're looking forward to moving ahead on that. It's just slowing things down a little, so, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Kropman, please.
Really, I have nothing, because I've had no meetings since the last time we met, except for personnel and budget, which is a separate matter. Tomorrow, uh, City Minister Krugel and I will attend an MMPA meeting. This one's in Faribault at our plant there, the MMPA plant there, um, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Councilmember Sullivan.
As Councilmember Kirby talked about, we did have an ETA meeting tonight, um, and the snags that we went right into with the Cambria land sale purchase were, were just some surveys that need to be taken care of, that without had been finished, but actually they're the wrong surveys from what they had requested. So they just changed the terms on the closing date. Other than that, I don't really have anything to report. Mirth Puck on Thursday, our last meeting got canceled because of the weather. And then I'd just like to reach out and thank the Lions Club for the Easter icon for the kids, and now this past Saturday was a great turnout.
Okay, let's go with Councilmember. I think that, I had to look at my cheat sheet, I'm sorry about that.
Here's my need match. Uh, like everybody else, had no meetings until this week, Mirth Puck. And HRA is this Wednesday as well.
HRA is this Wednesday?
Yep. And getting down the, um, where are we going? Well, two weeks ago, New Country School had their prom. There's some students here locally here, this sort of go that school. So I just want to reach out to, or shout out to the Henderson Fire Department, donating five hundred dollars to their prom so they could have it, actually, so, just appreciation there.
Okay, thank you very much. I personally do not have anything. We'll go with our city clerk, HR director, and communications expert over here.
Nothing tonight, please.
Nothing, okay. How about our city attorney?
Just briefly, I was a little tardy today with, uh, other business. I don't know if you got mentioned, the, uh, city did complete the sale of Mirth Puck, uh, last week. I got the check here tonight, so.
I'll be there tomorrow.
Yeah, one more signature to get, uh, tomorrow.
I had to see Dr.'s appointment, so I apologize.
No, no problem.
I will, I can do it tonight, too, if you want me to.
We can maybe swing down and do that thing. So we got, uh, the closing essentially finalized, uh, we we put together kind of last minute, so uh, we got a couple signatures left and get to see their money tomorrow then.
Those on the Mirth Puck property. And I do apologize if I held you up at all.
No problem.
Okay, how about our city administrator? City Administrator Krugel, please.
Uh, not much really to report. We did have a personnel and budget committee meeting, and there'll be some items that came from that that will be developed at personnel and budget and brought to City Council probably in the next month, um, or so. So keep an eye on that. Personnel and budget committee meetings are public, so if anybody who's interested in coming to that, um, you know, the public's more than welcome. We do have a policy with, that has been adopted by City Council regarding other City Council members from coming to that, um, you know, we we want to shy away from that for open meeting law considerations. Uh, but yeah, there's a, there's a lot of good stuff, and, you know, it's April right now, and in a couple months, we're going to be kicking off the twenty twenty budget process, so we started that again.
Wonder what we're looking at, street sweeping?
They're out there right now, so they're, they're sweeping.
We have any feedback?
I don't know if they're out right now.
We have any feedback in regards to, uh, the investment that the city's made for this, uh, street sweeping?
Uh, from what I've heard from the, from the operators, they, they, it's a good deal, so.
Rich?
I just wanted to remind you about Arbor Day on Friday, Arbor Day, three nine, ceremony in the heart. Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty? I will be there, hopefully. Okay, anybody else have anything before we close?
Just maybe, if somebody was mentioned there, with Arbor Day, I think we should remind our citizens that we have the ability for them to purchase trees through the city, with the city planting those trees. And those ones are there, we'll, and Jasper, if you would help, I know they're at the office, but I'm not sure if they're online.
Yes, they're online. We have a Facebook post out there that has a link to them. Um, so you go online, go on Facebook, or come in, and we can get you set up. Um, it's a good deal, uh, you know, you don't have to dig the hole. We'll dig the hole for you on your property, um, you just have to pay for the tree.
You'll also mark, you'll have go for one come out, so it's a safe install also.
Correct, yes. So we'll do a go for one call and have all the locates, um, done before we do.
Okay, well, if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?